All the meeting to order at six o'clock and looks like Dave is our only member not with us. Austin is joining virtually and we will stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, y'all know that Austin hasn't missed a meeting in about seven years, so bear with me here. Okay, has everybody had a moment to look at the agenda? Is there an approval for it?
So move.
Do we have any public comments?
Hey, hold on, don't forget to take that vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, all in favor?
Hold on, so who made the motion, who seconded?
Mary made the motion, Beth seconded. Beth's six zero.
Alright, fair enough.
Okay. Now, we have any public comments?
Would you?
Mr. Zikian?
And Mr. Zikian, this is related to the High School Project Assum?
Well, so, item three B specifically.
Okay, very good, used in society or?
Oh, no, that's the guest sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay. This is what happens when Austin's not here.
Yes.
Oh, no, I missed one clipboard tonight. It's the second sheet, though. There was. Okay, thank you.
Perfect, so last week, when I was here, I have in San Francisco Mr. Bond. And I had a quick conversation prior to the board meeting regarding an idea on how we could potentially insulate the district against some cost issues and save the district some money. We had discussed the expansion at East and a flat fee at the time that we had identified at $151,200, which based on the 7% that they usually charge came to a project cost of about $2.1 million. Now, he and I disagreed on where those bids may come in at. He thought that they would be closer to 2.1, I think they might be closer to 1.5, 1.6. We shall see. However, by capping that flat fee at that, that offered no protection to the district should those bids come in lower than expected. So based on the discussion that we had, I was imagining a line in the contract that would say something along the lines of, "The architect's fee for basic services will be the lesser of 7% of the cost of the work or $151,200." Pretty straight, concise, two point, simple, everybody can understand. Whomever went through this contract and rewrote it took even this simple one sentence and turned it into a paragraph. And the paragraph makes some changes that I find hard to believe were done by our attorney or somebody that's supposed to be representing us or having our best interests in mind. So the first thing that they changed is the architect's fee will be based off of the estimate of the cost of the work at the end of the design phase, no longer what the bids actually come in at. Right? So when we're talking about should the bids come in lower, how do we save money? That line right there eliminates any possibility to do so because that percentage is going to be based off of that amount. And the architect's compensation for basic services will be reduced to 7% of the cost of the work as defined there, but will not exceed 7% or $151,200. If we sign this contract as written, I can guarantee you our district will be writing a check for $151,200, regardless of what the bids come in at. We are not protected should a bid come in less than $2.1 million.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Alright, so, in accordance, hold on, bear with me here. In accordance with section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, we need to go into closed session to discuss legal actions, cause or action, causes of action or litigation. Is there a vote to go into closed session?
So move.
Roll call, Beth?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you all for bearing with us. We have Stiefel here to give us some news.
Yeah, Dr. Blovens, please welcome, thank you. Just throw the floor to you, I know you're, we're gonna, it sounds like tie up some old business, but also just look over the horizon just a little bit and maybe bring some good news to the board.
Yeah, absolutely. No, thanks for letting me be here this evening. It's exciting to see the projects going on in the district. Everything's worked out well. The good news is, is the financing's worked out well. You know, we started this conversation several years ago about the projects the district was needing to do, kind of put a financing plan together. It was a three-phase financing. As most of you know, the first phase was a general obligation bond issue, a no tax increase bond issue that the district passed. Got some additional premium proceeds to get those projects started. And then Phase One of the lease purchase. At that time, for those of you on the board at that time, obviously knew that there was a Phase Two lease purchase coming to finish the projects. We were holding off on that. Why did we hold off? You don't even pay, you'd be paying interest on a financing that you're not going to need the proceeds for until that time. So as we've been in constant contact with the district, updating your financial plan with additional AV growth, which has been better than what we projected at the time, which is also good news. We're now to a point the district needs the remaining portion of those lease proceeds that we talked about a few years ago to now come in, get those additional lease proceeds and finish your projects. So, the good news is, like I mentioned, it's all falling into place as we planned. You never know three years ago if that's going to happen, but it's actually worked out very, very well and we're super excited about that. So, as you know, the first GO, we got $43.7 million, the first LP, 8.6. So this second phase of the lease purchase, the cost of certificate participation notes, same thing as the lease purchase, we're looking at $9 million. What you have on an action item tonight is to approve a resolution, what we call a parameters resolution that authorizes us to go on the market and sell the certificates. We plan on doing that next week, get those proceeds into your construction fund so you can, I think you've got some projects that are needing those bond, those lease funds in the next couple months.
So when our credit rating went up, I guess, a year or a year and a half ago, will we get a discounted rate when you guys go to market for this specifically or not?
Yes. Great question. So, Dr. Berger had got to go through a very fun process through Standard and Core. It's an underlying rating agency. They take a very deep dive, and you'll probably remember this, that we're on the board before. The last time we did this, they take a deep dive in your district finances, policies, procedures, budgets, look at your long-range planning, what that looks like, your assessed value. They also take a very deep dive in your community as a whole. So they look at your housing, they look at your household income, they look at your AV growth. They take a deep dive in your community and you get a rating. That rating last time went from an A+ to a AA-, if you recall, which is a huge deal. The reason you got that, number one, is the district's finances, the policies and procedures that the board has set, that you scored a perfect score in regards to what the district can do. But also a big portion of that is something that is out of the control of the district, which is your community growth. And you obviously received high ratings on that and got the bump to a AA-. We are supposed to get that back tomorrow. They were going to committee this afternoon. I got a call from S and P that they're going to push it off to tomorrow morning. I was hoping to have that for you. We fully anticipate, anticipate, that that's going to be an AA- stable, which is one of the top ratings you can get in the state. You're probably in the top, I'm going to say 10% in the state in regards to your underlying rating. And you're absolutely right. What that means is, we put this out to market, to our investors, on our syndicate desk. We'll have about 300 to 350 people working selling your bonds that day, your leases, your certificates that day. That high rating is basically a security for those investors to say, "This is a very secure investment." So it's a very secure investment, what that does is it drives the prices up for investors, yields down, interest rates down for the district. So you obviously benefited from that greatly the last time we went out. You've got better ratings. We anticipate you to get the AA-, the numbers, preliminary numbers that I'm going to share with you tonight include that AA- rating. So yes, absolutely. So what we have, and I'll go over the lease numbers real quick, what we anticipate. Again, we're pricing this next week, so we fully anticipate the market's not changing much. In fact, the last two days we've had some bumps, which is a good thing. I can tell you that we never know. As you all can guess, the market's been all over the place the last really several years, but your rating obviously helps that consistency. So what we're currently looking at right now is $9 million beginning your project fund. We put an eight-year call on this. What this means is in eight years, which would be on Form 1 of 32, the district would have the ability to come back in and refund those. What that means is, is potentially refinance those. So if the market's in a position that you can go back in and refund those and save money, we will be here to say, "Here's an opportunity to refund those or refinance those, and you then would pay a lowered interest rate the last 12 years." Typically speaking, that'll happen because in that time period, you're going to have a 12-year deal now instead of a 20-year deal, right? So that's a much better situation, or I'm sorry, 25-year deal. So you'll get bills shorter significantly. So hopefully you'll be able to save some dollars on that. But obviously the rates that you get won't go up at that call date. They were stable throughout the maturity of it. They can only go down at that point if we refund those. So we've got a call date of 4/1/32. We're looking at five, four and a halfs and seven and three, or four and three-quarter percent coupons, which is going to drive a true interest cost to tick at about a 487. So as you know, when you do a lease purchase, there's a little bit higher interest rate than you would see on a GO. Reason being, as you know, a general obligation bond issue hasn't had the lower tax tied to it. That automatically drives revenue in your debt service fund, so it's a more secure investment. So when you go do a lease purchase, you have a AA- GO credit, then you're actually A+ when you go into the market. Still very good. You're not going to pay much more interest rate than you would in a GO, but all leases typically have a little bit higher of an interest rate by, you know, it's hard to say, a few basis points based upon the market at that particular time. So as you know, a 487 is a pretty good deal. I would like to be able to go buy a car or house right now at 47, which I cannot do. So we're expecting a very good, very good outcome on that pricing. Like I said, the market the last couple days has actually been in our favor. Overall, the last month or two, it's been very stable, relatively speaking, so it's stable means the last two years. So we anticipate a very, very good pricing. Now, what does that mean looking forward? The district has lots of options. You say, if you recall, we did a levy transfer when you did your GO, right? That levy went over to your Fund Four to pay for this lease. So that initial lease of the 8.6 million and the now 9 million, what does that look like from your budget standpoint? What that means is, is that levy is driving enough revenue in your Fund Four to pay for both leases, and the only amount that the district had to subsidize is around $100,000 a year. So we're talking total proceeds in all this of $61.3 million to get your projects done. And you're in a position now for about $100,000 a year on your Fund Four to subsidize that levy that we put over there. That's, I couldn't have asked for a better situation to be in. So we're super excited about that. Now, what's the safety in it? Let's say, well, we don't, you know, we need the cash flow in our Fund Four. What does that look like? Realistically, that's only going to be about a six-year subsidy. And the reason being, remember, in 2030, your first lease purchase is currently callable. So at that particular time, we can go back in and refund your original lease purchase to save dollars, which means your payments will go down. Even restructured if we need to to help with some payments. So realistically speaking, you're looking at $600,000 over the next six years, around that amount. Before then, we can refund the first lease purchase and then your levy will cover the remaining portion of those. Yes?
Now, if we experience growth rates above 5%, 4%, now 2027 and above, it would make that even worse.
That's exactly right. And that's my next point. Number two, you grow out. You're very, as you know, we put a very conservative growth rate in there. We know that your community is growing very, very high. We put growth rates a lot less than what you've seen the last five to eight years because I like being conservative. I would like to show you, not worst-case scenario, but definitely a conservative scenario so that the board can plan accordingly. But yes, realistically speaking, there's a very good chance that the district has higher AV growth than what we built in and that $100,000 may be to the black. And third point I want to make is the district also has an opportunity, as early as 2025, if so choose, up to about $11, $10, $11 million, to run another no-tax rate increase bond issue and do what we call lease buyback. So if the district says, "We just don't like subsidizing that $100,000, let's pay that lease off with the GO." What that looks like is obviously a ballot initiative for a no-tax increase bond issue in which the district would have in that language as a lease buyback, which then takes that expense out of your capital project fund, puts it in your debt service fund, and then it's not impacting your operating dollars. Okay? Now, if the district says, "You know, let's just save that bonding capacity. We're okay with it, grown out of it, or we're not subsidizing as much as we thought, or we don't need that in our Fund Four, we're able to cover that additional expense," then each year, yes?
Why don't you finish that point, then I think Austin's got a question.
Okay. And then each year after that, your bonding capacity for a no-tax increase bond issue is going to increase, obviously based on your AV growth, about 3.5 to 4 million annually. So let's say in 2025, April 2025, the district wants to go get a no-tax increase bond issue, pay that lease off, that cost comes out of your Fund Four. If you say, "We're okay with that, we want to build our bonding capacity for maybe future bond issues," then that bonding capacity every year after that, 26, it goes to about 14.5, 15 million, then about 18 million. So each year that bonding capacity is going to grow, and at any point, the district can then go back in and run a no-tax increase bond issue, potentially have enough money to pay off the lease and do additional projects because it'll be over the amount that the lease is costing.
Austin, what you got?
Yes, sir.
So, I appreciate that. So the question I have is, right now, I think what Dr. Berger has proposed in our budget is that we're going to do a 323 levy into the general fund, a dollar one into debt service, and 21 cents into capital projects for the total of 445. So if we were to go in and get that, get that 11 million or whatever you just said there a second ago, what does that do to the tax allocations in terms of what gets levied into general fund? What gets levied into debt service and what gets levied into capital projects?
Yeah, so all these scenarios, Austin, are based upon the levy being where they currently are in both operating debt service fund and capital project fund.
Well, the reason I ask that question is because what you said is we would basically go out and get some GO, general obligation bonds, and then retire the lease purchase ones. Is that what I heard you say correctly?
Correct.
Okay, so the whole, so the idea then is basically what I would expect is that the debt service levy would go up, to back to a dollar 22 or whatever, but that capital projects levy, because the lease service is gone, because we bought them back, would go down some. Or, that's my question is, then, you know, how is all that stuff re?
Sure.
How's that stuff reallocated in terms of the proposed tax rate? Because I'm assuming we would do this in April, and so this would be next August. I'm assuming we would have to figure that, or next June, we'd have to figure that out.
Right, so obviously, that would be up to the Board of Education when you do your tax rate in the August of 2025. Does that make sense? So the district would have the ability at that particular time, which obviously we'll have more information there based upon your AV growth and how this all plays out. But you could, you could move levy from Fund Four to Fund Three. If you're, if you're, if you're generating more dollars now that you pay off that lease, if that makes sense, and you're Fund Four than what your levy needs to pay that lease, you could move a portion of that levy into Fund Three, therefore increasing your bonding capacity potentially a little bit more. The district could also put it in Fund One, if that makes sense, to generate dollars in the operating fund as well. Or they could keep it in Fund Four and generate additional dollars above the lease payments to then potentially do some projects out of cash and not do borrowing.
Okay, so, and I think you said the key word there is we can move from Fund Four to Fund One, and that would be a recurring revenue, correct?
Correct.
And then, and then from there, we could plow that into teacher salaries or something like that?
That is correct, yes. So you can move levy from Four, Two, and One. Okay? You cannot move levy, as you all know, because of the last GO bond issue, from Three to One or anywhere else. That takes a ballot initiative, which is what you did when you passed a no-tax increase bond issue. So now that you have that levy out of Fund Three, it can be in Fund One or Fund Four, Austin.
And then the other option would be? Whatever over there at the high school.
Austin, we got, we got audio of you, but we lost a video.
There you go. There you are, you're back.
Yeah, you're back.
Can you repeat the last question?
Yeah, so, so the other option would be, if you did this, then we could also do that performance gym over there at the, at the new high school or figure out other classroom situations as we seem, as we do fit, correct? Or is that, or is this just to be, just basically pay one off and move it?
Yeah, so, yeah, you could obviously, you're talking about just keep it in Fund Four?
Well, or do another capital project.
Sure, yes, yes, you would have flexibility to do any of the above.
Okay. Yeah, that's, so that's the, so that has to go into our map, so we need to look at our master plan.
Right.
And then kind of make that, and look at our crystal ball there, okay.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we let you finish your, the presentation, and then we'll try to grab any other questions and stuff that we don't?
Yeah, the good news is, Austin got me off track. I think that actually was all three options. You have a, like I mentioned, you've got six years to do a refunding of the other, cover it. You can grow, outgrow your AV growth, or option three, like we just talked about, was a GO to pay it off. So, so all those options are available. What you're actually, board agenda action item is tonight, obviously, is to prove that parameters resolution was authorizes us within the parameters that you have in your board packet to price this $9 million lease purchase. So I'll answer any more questions that you have at this time.
Alright, Austin, we're going to come to you last. So Beth, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
No, I'm good. I'm good right now, thank you.
I just want to confirm the positivity of paying off the lease purchase is you can move that to Fund One, to Fund One. The consequence is, is then theoretically it reduces your bonding capacity, you do so, correct?
Your lease purchase, I'm sorry.
No, you're right, go ahead.
The lease purchase, lease purchasing bonding capacity, yeah.
Yes, your Fund Four, yeah, your capital project, your Fund Four, obviously, if you pay that off and move that levy, then that's going to no longer generate that money. There's still going to be enough levy in there that's going to drive enough revenue to pay off the other lease, but whatever that remainder amount is, which we'll know then, if it goes to one, let's say out of the 21 cents, it's 15 or 10, let's call it 10, and you drop it to 11, we want to make sure we keep enough levy in Fund Four to pay for the other lease, the $9 million lease. But the lease that you pay off, if that makes sense, whatever that money's generating will go to One and covered operating. So yes, you would be taking less revenue going into your Fund Four. But your debt service fund will not change. You know, we've got that set at your dollar one, and we've planned your long-range planning with that dollar one in place for those no-tax increase bond issues.
So we continue to see growth in the district, which also drive debt service for Fund Three. Theoretically, we could be in a position where we may or may not have to be issuing the bond leases and keep that in Fund One for general operating expenses.
That would be an option, I think.
I think that'd be a.
I will say that this fall, you'll be in a situation when you see your new AV come in, right? Now, it's an non-assessment year, so it may not be a big year, but you'll get new construction, personal property, those things. So, you know, this fall, we sit down and talk about what does this look like for a potential April no-tax increase bond issue. The board will have much more knowledge at that particular time on where we're at with your current AV after this most recent assessment cycle.
Austin, do you have any other questions?
No, I think, just to echo what Kyle said, we have lots of flexibility moving into, if we do this, moving into the future.
Alright, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Okay, so you guys see the motion? Dr. Berger, do you want to walk through that?
Yeah, this motion to approve the COP resolution as presented, and that's that first artifact in your board docs.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Alright, 7-0.
Go get us 3.87. Oh, did you, you coughed that? He's going to jump into another board meeting here, so Brett will be around if we have a question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Alright, bond agreement. So, we are, I'm looking for. Do we vote on the resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. He's like, wait. I'm sorry.
I did, I said yes.
I still moved it.
Okay, so we have, next action item is the motion to approve. Is this updated?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the paragraph there.
Okay, so.
So it did have a revision to the language? And you or Elizabeth may read that out?
Yeah, so I'll read, "Motion to approve the G802-2017 document as presented, except for the last paragraph being modified as follows. Additional fees for the four-room addition at East Elementary will be in accordance with the agreement, except for the architect's fee will be based off the lowest bid received for the project. The lowest bid received will be used as the cost of the work as described in Article 11 of the agreement, but the architect's compensation will be reduced to 7% of the cost of the work or $151,200, whichever is less." Is there a motion to approve the item? Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Any abstaining?
I want to oppose, sorry.
Yeah, 6-1.
Just for a point of clarification, Heidi, did you oppose or did you abstain?
I ended up opposing, thank you. Kyle got in my ear over here.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
And then I think, Ms. Williams, if I may, we'll let Tom off the hook, so I quit paying for you. Thank you for your help in negotiating that, and thank you, Eric, for helping with us on that too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Talk to you soon, thanks.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Christopher, I think you're up with a update?
You bet.
No presentation, that's correct, no presentation. We can't put the, well, we put the first page of the change order up there so you can use that as a point of reference.
Sure.
Alright, so we're here to talk about change order 16, correct?
That is correct.
And so what this consists of is, you know, we all talked about the BAT study over the last several months. Long and short, this, the $0 portion of this covers the BAT study delay impact at the site and the building. And then the add portion of this would be the requests for essentially 10 weeks collectively for weather and other delays throughout the project that'll bring us some of the new completion dates that are listed. So again, the BAT study is PCO 65, the weather delays under 73.0. This also includes PCO 80, which is electric through the overhead doors and drinking fountain. PCO 83 is the area C box at the gas service entrance. And then PCO 84 is area F, it's a wall for a situation that we ended to take care of on site. Is there any questions for me, or do you want me to give you more detail on this?
Austin, do you have any questions?
No, I do not, I think, I talked to Chris earlier today.
Anybody else have any questions? I just want to confirm which areas are which on the new schedule. I am looking for a map and I'm not finding it, I'm very sorry about that.
I see this way of looking at it, Heidi, is we're building everything from west to east.
Okay.
So, the long and short of this is prior to the original substantial completion date or by the original substantial completion date, you'll get areas A through E. So the main entrance all the way back to area E. The separation point there would be F, which is your new gym. So it's F in the little baseball area, that's F, and then G's the cafeteria. So that's the cafeteria, kitchen, cafeteria area, and agriculture.
Agriculture, it falls within G?
Yes.
Okay. One more, sorry, on that, because I wrote it down. Have we applied for a grant for that agriculture building yet?
We have, so we've got, what's our latest test? I apologize, I'm deferring you on that. They not get fielded. And so that will be a FB4 grant through Department of Gasing. So yes, we've got approval of it.
Awesome.
When we say ag building, do we mean the greenhouse or the building itself too, or both?
Both, sort of, I guess. We probably are all over the place on that, but it has an ag building and a greenhouse. The greenhouse is the piece that we got the grant for.
That's separate from this.
Yeah.
So this would be an addition, another grant?
Yeah, so section G is the cafeteria and the ag classroom shop area. And then, we had a meeting about a week and a half ago with every player in the building there, Hummer, us, who else was there, a couple others? Yeah, and so we're talking about the greenhouse, so right now, we're trying to work on the size of it, where it's coming up to the building, and all that good stuff, so yeah.
Who's writing it? Are you writing the grant?
Or Kelsey's.
Yeah, she's been a great asset, and had some experience with it, and she's, she's helped us with her bit some.
I just want to say too, the, the idea of this is make sure we're covered on time. With the amount of rain we've received, we certainly think area G is gonna fall into that five-plus-week category. Uh, we're hoping to deliver it earlier than December 19th, which would be the substantial completion date for that area. So that's our intent.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much.
You bet, thank you.
Uh, is there a motion to approve change order 16 as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right, 7-0. Moving on, employment. I'm gonna ask Austin's question, is anybody related to anybody?
No, but I almost had a heart attack. Sam, it's Sam up there, just realized she was resigning from being a coach.
Yeah.
And we're.
She's not allowed to go anywhere. Okay, um, is there a motion to approve the employment recommendations as presented? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 7-0, and now we turn it over to you, Dr. Berger.
Yeah, and we'll put up the presentation up there. Uh, I'm gonna try to do it from here, you guys are welcome to hear my, it's only, it's only like 130 slides, so you're welcome to stick around, but.
On that note, everybody had a good day.
It's 30 slides, but it's still, uh, but I would like to start by saying, remember, this is budget workshop, uh, certainly there'll be opportunity for questions here, but you can digest this information, you can send me questions, there may be something that you want me to drill down on. Typically, when we do the budget presentation itself, it's a little briefer, but not a lot briefer, maybe we cut down a third of the slides to 20, but if there's anything that you want me to drill down on, please make me aware. So, we'll start this out, and, uh, still the same budget goals for four years now. Well, I'm gonna also be mindful to myself, I should write myself a note, don't read any slides, do you, so.
That would be lost.
You read those, I'll only read a few, but, uh, there are some wordy slides on here that I will try to, uh, hold myself to. I like this checkoff list, because this kind of details out, uh, our, our budget construction process, and of course, here we are in June, we're gonna check off the budget workshop, but there'll still be a budget, a formal budget approval on June 27th. And I love going through this with you, I know I have, you know, I feel like this is a little bit redundant for this board, this seated board, but this really is information that you can take a quick look at and really assess the fiscal condition of virtually any district. This is just our projected summary, but this would look like the annual secretary board report, uh, that we file with the state, and it, and I can look at the SDR, and I can look at this, and they just, uh, almost you could lay one over the other. You will remember, there are four funds, we've talked about that with Dr. Plevins, and we've talked about frequently in board meetings, four funds, incidental fund, Fund One, uh, teachers' fund, Fund Two, Fund Three, the, uh, debt service fund, and Fund Four, capital project. So that's, I'm gonna, again, try to stay seated over here, but those are running in columns across the, with the totals out the back there. When we talk about operations, we're talking about Fund One and Two, okay? So I've got the little arrows pointing to those two, and you see, uh, when we are talking about building FY '25, the best thing we can do is get FY '24 settled. And really appreciate that our district, and I think it's the trust we build with the board, but I can also tell you, I think it's the trust we build with the salary committee and our staff, that, you know, we're not in a big hurry, because the later in the fiscal year that we can do things, the better to our advantage. So what I tell the salary committee is, I'm not planning on approving the salary until June, and the later in the game, I can be a little more aggressive with it, and they received that message well, so while you might see, uh, some districts do some of these pieces a little bit earlier, we have the benefit of making these as late in the game as possible, and I'm even asking for approval on it tonight, but you'll see what I'll be presenting in later in the moment. So you see there, as we project out, um, uh, 26.7% reserve, I'll get into a little bit more details as we go here. So, next slide, please. So I just want to block out that, that Fund Three and Fund Four for the moment, and just dive into this a little bit. So where does that 26% come from? If I took the ending balances up there, and I divided them by the total of the S, the total expenses in Fund One and Fund Two, I would get a 26% reserve. And the question that I know I beat on every year on this is, well, what's the appropriate level of reserves? For the districts that are as large as 25,000 students, and for the districts that are as few as less than 100 in Missouri, so 500 districts, some with 25,000 students, some with less than 100, that, that, that varies. But you could start for the, for the average district to say, if you're somewhere between 20 and 30%, that's great, that's really, really strong. If you are a larger district and you're, uh, starting to approach 30, and maybe going over 30, probably, there is a probably critical eye at that, as you're holding a little too much money. And if you go the other direction, if you go to below 20%, okay? Larger districts maybe can operate at lower than 20%, but as you approach that 20%, maybe a little critical eye, or do we have enough reserves? What's going on in the state, what's going on maybe in federal, maybe nationally, and certainly what's going on locally, depending on that particular district where they get their, where they get the revenues. So it's really a broad question, but I can tell you that you looked at, at anybody with any, um, experience at all, maybe look and go, 26%, what size is your budget, about 30 million, that's strong, that's really, really strong. And to, to support that even further, we'll look at that, and it's kind of related to Fund Four, we'll look at that in just a moment. So that's operations. When we look at Fund Three and Fund Four, we know that Fund Three pretty much takes care of itself. Braddock is gonna make two payments a, a year out of that, uh, one for interest, one for principal and interest. Once we set the tax levy in August, that fund takes care of itself. Fund Four is a, it's a little more, we get, you know, even someone with some experience looks at that, and you've got some work to do. The thing that I would note there is, if six or seven million dollars makes you a fiscally sound district in operations, 12 million looks really, really good, but there is more to that story than just us having 12 million. One, it projects out that Braddock is gonna be able to transfer 1.4 million dollars, which, from operations to Fund Four. So, we aspire to do that, I think that Braddock said, if I asked her flatly, are you gonna be able to transfer 1.4 million dollars, she would say no. We're gonna try to get that, but of course, that money just doesn't go away. If we don't transfer it into Fund Four, it's gonna stay in operations, and our reserves will tick up just a little bit. But we aspire to get 1.4, we just are restricted, um, on how much we can run into Fund Four.
Real quick question.
Yeah.
Following, um, this projected budget summary, um, what is it, is it based off of our, our last quarterly adjustment? Because when I'm looking at our budget approval from last July.
Yeah.
Not June, July, then the numbers are slightly, slightly different, so I assume this has been adjusted throughout the year.
It has.
And this projected summary is based on our last amendments.
Not only last amendment, even more current than that.
Projected June.
Yeah, she's working, very close to your date.
This is up to date.
I gotta tell you, when we get to this time of year, not every day, but we're working on the budget frequently. You know, two or three times a week, I'm coming over to Braddock's office and working an hour and a half, two hours, and as needed, you know? So, uh, so that 12 million dollars is a little inflated, but if I just looked at that immediately, I, that is a lot of money this district has in Fund Four, but are they doing any construction projects, could there be any general obligation bond funds in there? Maybe, and, uh, so, I'll get into that story just in a minute, but that, but that looks wonderful, right there, at 12 million. Next slide, please. So if they just pull it all together, quick look here, we see 26% in operations, that's great. Uh, Fund Three, you know, wouldn't dig into that too much, we know the tax curve itself, I need to look at a little bit more information before I be able to tell a little more of the story, and still, that 12 million dollars, that almost 13 million dollars, I've got some questions there, and some questions I'm gonna answer for you in, in just a minute of the future slide. All right, so we're kind of firming up FY '24 as we move into FY '25. And so, a little more history lesson, I've said our historical revenue right now is 2044, and, but I've also told you that's evolving, right? We're going much more to a locally, uh, revenues is what the district is gonna realize in the, in the upcoming years. Next slide, please.
I promised last one, the 1.4 that went to Fund Four, that was driven by the CHF and G rate?
It was not, so after we close out the year, if you've had a good year, you know, and you have a deficit spend, you're at your target, and we certainly are, uh, our target is 22%, so we're a little above our target at 26%. And if you're a district like us with our demographic, where you know you've got some facility needs coming, you know, and we've talked a lot about bonding, uh, capacity in lease purchasing and the general obligations, but our growth may outpace our bonding capacity here. So our strategy is, try to get money into Fund Four so we can help subsidize those projects. We subsid, if you remember, we subsidized the Kirk project by 2 million dollars, which, now you're, you're making me give away a little bit of that 12 million, you know, that we, that I was just talking about. We've got 2 million of that already committed to the Kirk project. But, uh, so, uh, it doesn't have anything to do with the AFG, it is just that we are trying to get money into Fund Four for the future subsidizing of projects.
Okay, so they just want to straighten.
Yep. All right, and so what, how we're, how in FY '24, really, and I, I said this last year, uh, this is gravitating towards a, uh, local revenues at a really rapid pace, so currently, we set it, this budget, approximately 60, 34, and 6%. No surprise on the 6% being reduced, because all the ester dollars are exhausted, but, but that moving to 60%, and that's, that's not a bad thing, that's a pretty good thing. Next slide, please. And so our historical tax levy, as mentioned, looked to earlier, this is, uh, prior to proposition 6725, we're running 325 in, in the operations, a dollar 20 in debt service, and, uh, for a total of 445. And that 445, if there's a number to affirm in your brain, 445, that's the, that's the number. Uh, next slide, please. And we won't be able to say historical for too much longer, because we know that's changed, but we know, uh, we put the historical slide, and then we put in FY '23. FY '23 looked really different, and it looked so different because we were subsidizing operations, general and special revenue fund, with ester dollars. So then we were levying more money into Fund Four, that's why that's 70 cents that year, and we were capturing that money to help subsidize future projects for the growth that we know is coming. So, a really effective strategy that allowed us to, again, generate, uh, those reserves in Fund Four. FY '24, of course, we don't do this until August, but what we project is approximately 323 in, in operations, a dollar one in, you know, excuse me, I apologize. FY '24, we had already set last August, so that is, this is what we are currently, I apologize, yeah. Uh, so FY '24 currently, 323 in operations, a dollar one in debt service, and that 21 cents carrying on lease purchase obligations in Fund Four. But again, if you'll notice, the bottom of each one of those, 445, 445, 445, what props did, and what Austin was alluding to, what Brett was responding to, is the community gave us the flexibility we needed to keep that levy at 445. Next slide. So we anticipate it to look like that in FY '25, but we won't know for sure. Certainly, it could be a little less in operations, maybe 320, but whatever that amount is, we will redistribute that to debt service to help pay down the general obligation, uh, bonds quicker, which will create us bonding capacity faster. So, what we're saying is, we, we, the levy is gonna be 445, we are not certain until August where that's gonna be distributed, but it's not gonna fall far from 323, a dollar one, 21 cents for that 445 total. Next slide, please. I threw, so that's kind of local, you know, the majority of our money, money in the 5100 revenue codes is gonna be current tax, and it's gonna be assessed valuation times the tax rate, uh, divided by 100, and that's gonna be our revenue. If we talk about state, because we are still highly supported by the state too, this is the formula in the most simple terms. It is gonna change for Senate Bill 727, but just as it is just right now, weighted average daily attendance, noses, we're gonna simplify it a little farther, say, that's kids. So for every kid, times an amount that's provided by the state, 6375 on the current FY '24, that's gonna go up, and I'll talk about that in the slide in just a minute. Dollar value modifier, and as tempted as I am to give you guys some question and answer, like, what's the dollar value modifier? I'm not going to, uh, but the D, the DPM is basically, we also term it cost of living, so they look at your county and say, does it cost a little more in Warren County than it does in my home county, OSHA County, for example? And it does, so we have a DPM that's recalculated over two years. This is a component that you can kind of bring your attention to as you go to MSBA, or, this really works in a district like us, here at Wright City, works hard managed. In an effort to equalize the formula, then they look and say, but are you a wealthy district? Do you have a lot of assessed value in your, in your school district? Why this is so advantageous to Wright City is, that local effort is calculated, calculated on FY '06 assessed value rates. It shows us at an AV of 125 million, we have twice that now. So if you're in a relatively static district that hasn't, hasn't seen much revenue grow, you know, that, that's not very advantageous to you, but if you were a growing district, you get to capture all the new revenue, and it doesn't impact the formula. And it is a, a piece that many people are critical of the formula, I thought it had a chance of maybe being changed, because 727 did change some elements of the formula, but it helped. And so, again, we'll ride that out as long as we can. I'm not even gonna tell you that I'm an advocate for, for its status as it is, uh, you know, I think it could be looked at and, and recalculated, that's not for us, that's not for the legislature. So that's gonna equal your state funding. I made that really simple slide very difficult, but I will tell you, the formula comes out to, uh, what, 19 lines, but each one of those lines, for example, the weighted, uh, average daily attendance links out to its own formula, you know, where you get more money depending on if it's an IEP kid, an EEO kid, or a kid on, uh, free reduced lunch. So, complicated issue, kind of made simple, but I turned complicated. Next slide, please. So, what occurred this year in the legislative session? Everybody is aware, our FY '25 is looking great, that's not the concern, it's after that is the concern. But what you're gonna see is, that state advocacy target goes up to 6760, and it's scheduled to go up again in FY '26, that same amount. So if we say noses times state advocacy target, that's a huge advantage for us, right? But that's, that's for all districts in the state, everybody's SAT goes up the same. Uh, one thing that we took a gamble on, and whenever I say gamble, that's not very precise, we took an educated guess on taking the increase in transportation that they provided two years ago, and we put that towards our salary scheme. And we thought we had good intel from, uh, the appropriations chair, Senator Huff, who really wanted to, uh, commit to funding transportation, and even full funding of current transportation is 75% of allowable expenses. So it's not 100%, but they have gotten that down to 20% of allowable expenses. I'm pleased to tell you that this is looking more and more like a, a really solid future in transportation now. Who knows if whatever the, uh, state does get to a point where they're looking for funds, but right now, the Senate took the added step, and yes, I'm reading this, to ensure that 60 million dollar increase in next year's budget will be classified as an ongoing expense, means ongoing funding. So, that doesn't mean the legislature can't turn that about, but right now, it's been well communicated in both chambers that, look, we have an obligation to fund transportation, let's step up and do that. So that wording makes me feel pretty good, even moving into FY '26, uh, I mean, it will, it will still be at risk of funding if, if the state realizes it's shortfalls.
Speaking of state funding, the state has an obligation to fund education second across all expenses across the state.
That is correct. Debt first, education second. And, you know, and I've talked to Dr. Salvo about this, even in the times of, of, you know, the, the recession, although we were hit on the state side, uh, we did pretty well. Whenever you look at, you know, um, other social services provided by the state, so, and, and as we gravitate from a state-funded school to a locally funded school, we're less susceptible to those, you know, that have been flowing to state. Next slide, please. Not gonna read this to you, but I did dark this, that this is, this is right out of, uh, either the NSBA or MASA kind of summary, I think this was MASA, that, look, there is thunder, uh, on the horizon, you know, there, in FY '26, it's gonna be a harder budget to You know, in FY26, it's going to be a harder budget to write than FY25. Now, we're moving away from that because we're less reliant on state funding, but for some of our colleagues, particularly our colleagues in our conference, that are mostly state-funded, that's the reason why you're not seeing, despite the fact that FY25 looks pretty good. A lot of our colleagues, particularly those to our west, are being still very, very concerned in what they're doing with recurring expenses. And of course, the largest recurring expense is salaries. So we're kind of separating ourselves further from the EMO, like, you know, in that aspect. Next slide, please. So to break this down just a little bit more, FY25, we wrote the budget off 5% increase of new construction. Feel confident about that, we'll find out sooner than later how much we beat that by. So I'm confident we're going to beat that, that measure or a little bit more. Prop C has a little increase. Uh, as I said there earlier, the state advocacy target, and I put that down in the lower right-hand column just as a reference, even though I know it's Kelly Elizabeth, she's a graphics person. And I just stuck it in there, I didn't ask her. She didn't say I need to widen it or make it taller. The fact that it's eclipsing the wildcat. But, uh, so that, that state action target, the second thing, you know, noses in the state action target goes up significantly, that's hard managed. The dollar value modifier, the cost of living in Warren County, which is all positive, but at least the formula reflects that, and so that went up for us. And then again, transportation will again be funded at 75% of allowable expenses. And as you can imagine, and as you're going to see here in the future plot of the slide, our expenses are going up in transportation, but the good part is they're going to be 75% reimbursed in a reverse one year after of those allowable expenses, and our increases are almost completely out of allowable expenses. So that's good news for us. Federal programming, time programs are going to be flat, and Esser are not going to be talked about next year for a little bit, right, because they'll be completely fleshed out. Next slide, please. So just kind of a snapshot, 30,000-foot look at that, the observation I made to Veronica. As I said, you know, when we entered the district, we were really talking $25 billion budget. Really, now our operations, due to some pretty aggressive moves on the salary schedule, has our operations itself at 27 million. Debt service, we're going to say 2.2, and of course, this is inflated, this capital projects because of the project. But typically, what we say is we've got about $1 billion going in and out. If we've got no projects going on at all, and we're not going to reach our reserves for another project, no projects at all, we need $1 million in and out of Fund IV. So if you were networking with colleagues and they said, oh, how big is Wright City? If you set a $30 million budget, that'd be pretty much spot on. Next slide, please. Breaking down the expenses, those purchased services, architect, lawyer, anything we contract out for, kind of are in that 10%. Sometimes we're contracting out for student services, because we might, I'm just making it up, I may need a physical therapist, but we can't hire a physical therapist, so we contract that out. So that number can fluctuate a little bit, and we're constantly monitoring it. Basically, Dr. Wade plays a comparison game, can we hire a full-time person or a half-time person? Or is it cheaper to contract out? Now, I made that too easy because sometimes companies, we don't have that choice sometimes. It is, this is what we've got, because we can't just go out and get a purchase service all the time now because they're full. So then we're going to beat the bushes or retire people or whatever. Supplies, utilities, benefits, and of course, what I always like to bring your attention is 80% of your operational budget, once you do salaries and benefits, the 80% of your operational budget is committed. Next slide, please. Operational expenses, we're not going to talk about salaries, because I've got a few slides committed to that. Last month, we approved the health insurance benefit, and of course, we got bad news on that to the tune of almost $200,000. And I think that you can expect in the upcoming years, and you know, Dr. Wade and Dr. Salvo will be working on that at about the time of the calendar year, in terms of when it really gets heated, but what is the growth of it, and what staffing is it going to require to accommodate that growth? But I, as a general rule, certainly that's not over, you know, three or four years of experiencing what I think the district is going to experience in the next three or four years, but I think you can just about commit $300,000, $350,000 to additional FTE every year, you know, so. Um, you know, they may change that, they may lower it, may increase, but that's kind of the number that we'll be working with, that I believe the team will be working with moving forward. And then those that we added this year detailed there for the board. So we, you know, we had $500,000 just in that on the table of new expenses when we started out the budget and more, uh, which we'll look at in just a bit.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Um, on the SLP, it says after eliminating SLP for three days a week, what, why do we eliminate an SLP for three days a week?
Kind of contracted person, three days a week to try to save some money.
So we're hired, okay, so we're going to have a full-time?
Yeah, because we have work.
Not in addition to?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Just to meet the need.
Okay.
So we're saying to hire somebody full-time instead of contracting three days?
We're at that break-even.
We are.
Gotcha, great, thank you.
And also, you know, we're probably, I don't want to put words in Dr. Wade's mouth, but there's many categories with it, we're also very on that side now, that of, well, the board's fully aware of this. Sometimes we're erring on the side of going ahead and grabbing the FTE when it's available because the need is coming. And we even talked about some of these high-needs physicians, particularly in secondary schools. There's nothing wrong with picking up an extra math teacher for a year while you can get them and try to sell them on Wright City, and I have a board rich offering for your students, because we are in that mode. I mean, we really are. Sometimes you're spending a little money upfront because you know the need's coming and you got new person.
I apologize for not asking this question during the deployment category, but how many open positions are we at right now that we need to fill by August?
Um, we've got a elementary position at West, we have two DC positions, we have a math position that we think we are close to hiring today or tomorrow. We have a social studies position at middle school that we should have wrapped up today or tomorrow. Uh, we're good at high school, we're good at East right now, we have two EL positions, we captured those. Um, so we're like three or four FTEs right now, but I think we're close on two, yeah, probably by this week. We're just going to make it to the board meeting.
The math position, that is, we're back on fill?
Yeah, we've got everything, yeah. Right now, we're worried about the math at middle school, to interview somebody who's really liked, we're trying to figure out if we can get them or not.
So this is some slides we shared with the Salary Committee, which is really a good process. I'll tell you, I think I'm going to tell you in the upcoming slide, but really came in with some idea of the revenue we were going to realize for FY25, and really wanted to, really, an easier administrative function is just put a certain percent through the salary schedule. But it has been a good process of working with the Salary Committee, and really putting the money where the committee believes it's needed. So I'm kind of stepping on the message just a little bit, but you'll see, when we're talking about salary costs, we always run this projection, it is very early, even before I asked for it. So 1%, we're needing to find $350,000 if we assume there's a cost to move into the schedule. Next slide, please.
Why does it say plus 107?
Uh, 242 plus 107 is a 349. So we're adding 107,000.
I'll move that.
Just to move essentially, you just take a snapshot, and you say, okay, everybody's staying exactly where they're at, and they move.
Gotcha.
To make it a little more conservative, to be honest, and that's not a bad thing, but we look at that angle every chance we can. Uh, and I've never done this in previous districts, actually Veronica actually does an average horizontal move too. So she looks historically how many people would horizontally on the schedule, and she'll throw us a projection of that, which is just a little extra due diligence. Uh, next slide, so then 2% and 3%, so we're talking 3%, we got to go find $500,000, $500,000 move in revenue. We knew, next slide, we thought in this rosy picture of FY25, and I will say this with also saying, most of my colleagues, even in some of the more prosperous, more wealthy districts moving to our East, were more conservative than I was surprised at. Now Francis Howes is an exception, they were in a two-year agreement, that at least the first year is out of this world. Uh, but most of our colleagues, even, you know, the ones that border us, talking about Washington, um, Lincoln County R3, Wentzville did very little this year, we were much more aggressive than them. So we had a pretty good idea that we were looking for 5%. But again, an easy administrative function for us is, let's put 5% on the salary schedule, let it flow through, and through that work with the Salary Committee, we've got a different recommendation for you. Next slide, please. Also, this is the time that we look at market value, I just put up FY24 because, you know, we took care of some needs last year. All those listed above, there were things that we did for FY24. Uh, this year FY25, we just had one, it was just one department, District's Communications Director. And what I'll be recommending here in just a moment is, we essentially have three columns for support staff that do some of that type of work. We have, and I'll, and I'll, actually, Dr. Wade, I won't pull Veronica into this, she's in the Assembly, might need you to. Uh, Dr. Wade, frontline secretary that maybe is less than 12 months is out in that first column.
Yeah, nine-month secretary.
Nine-month secretary. And then, like most of the ladies here in the office, AP Karen, all those folks are in that second column.
12 months.
I'm sorry?
12 months.
They're 12 months, and 12-month secretaries.
Let's, for the record, all secretaries are on the first one. The central office ladies are on the second one.
Oh, yeah, I thought that's why I said that, that's clearly not what I said. So, all right, so they're in that second column. We have the Administrative Assistant for me is on that third column. What I'm proposing is the District's Communications Director will be moved to the third column. That would be taking that person from 1602 to 2371 per hour at 215 days. Still a bargain, very much bargain. Next slide, please, yes.
Um, where's that person housed? At the high school?
Yes, and it helps out with athletics.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, okay, nevermind, okay, thanks for my question.
So again, in those negotiations with the Salary Committee, here's what we are, will be proceeding very likely on the 27th. Uh, 3% to the base schedule, so the 3% flows all the way through, because as you remember, as we've looked at comps in the past, on the front of the schedule, we compete with everybody. Larger districts, smaller districts, certainly all districts like us, with very few exceptions, questions said, very few exceptions, but we look very good. And then what we're proposing is, then we take that cell at year 11, if you can see that, that's scheduled, and we're going to apply an additional 1% there, and then go down to the 21, uh, excuse me, year 22. Oh, okay, 11 to 20, 21, and add another percent there. So what we're trying to do is get more of that resource in the middle and the back of the schedule. May finish this slide, Mr. Jones, I'm going to ask it before I move the slide. 5% base to salary schedules for support and administration, and then this issue also came up too. There has been some movement in our area where districts that are, very few districts that have moved all of their leave time to personally, you know, and certainly we had that ask. It doesn't come out very, you know, there are, was there Veronica, one or two districts that did that in our comps?
Two or five, well, there's two.
Two, and so where we settled with the Salary Committee was moving two of those days. So they'll get, not an additional two days assigned to their leave, just two days that can be used for anything, personal use. And at that time, Mr. Jones, can I field your question?
Sure, I got two, I had three questions, actually two questions. First of all, the additional 1% to years 11 to 20, and the additional 1% to 21-plus, is that being applied starting in the BS column or the MS column, or which column?
All of them, yeah, every column.
Okay, so the, so we're starting in the BS column, and then that propagates all the way over to the right?
Correct.
Okay, the second one, motion to change two sick leave days to two personal leave days. My concern on this one is, we have issues filling in for substitutes as it is. How much more acute will that problem become if we do, because you know, once you give them two personal days? I mean, I'm not saying the staff doesn't deserve it, however, that's just going to make our substitute fill rate that much more difficult.
Uh, just a quick response on that, you are correct, absolutely. We, I would say it's negligible, but does it move the needle in the wrong direction? It does. But it was a high priority need or a high priority ask from the committee, and again, uh, the ask was to move them all to personally, so we settled out here. I think it's within market value, what you're seeing, I think you're seeing school districts particularly, and this would be no surprise to anybody, those districts to our west are having to get pretty creative because they don't have the money to put.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your conversation.
Yeah, I was finished, I just to say that they don't have the money, so they had to be creative in doing that, and that's causing us to, I guess, respond, as we sit back, ever, ever.
Those two.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I hate, I hate this remote stuff sometimes, I apologize. So two questions for Aaron, for you, what is Fort Zuma do, do they have four, four personal days? Right now, we have two, I think.
Um, our certified.
Fort Zuma have four?
No, our certified staff has five personal days and eight sick days. Um, and, and substitutes are a problem for everybody. Um, our paraprofessionals have the same five personal days and eight sick days. What I would say is that moving the two sick days to two personal days will probably actually allow people to put in that time to allow time to find a substitute, rather than doing a last-minute, I have a headache on Cardinals opening day, so I can't come in, um, and maybe have some time to plan to get a substitute, so, you know, it might actually, um, you know, have a better impact on being able to find a sub.
Okay, so I think the other calculation you need to make, and this would be a savings to the district, is obviously now, first of all, I'm assuming they cannot carry over these two personal leave days, correct?
As sick, as sick, but they can't carry them over as personal.
Yeah, so basically, they're going from 10 sick days to eight sick days, correct?
I'm not trying to say.
It went down to.
Right now.
It'd be nine to seven.
Our staff, how many sick days a year?
Nine, I believe, for nine months, so, 10 for 10.
Okay, so they get nine, nine sick days, and they get two personal days for a total of 11.
Correct.
Now they're going to seven sick days and four personal days, right?
Correct.
So, so the calculation you should really make is, now those individuals that can't bank those sick days from year to year, so I'm curious at how much money we're going to save when somebody retires that we're not going to have to pay out sick days on the back end. So technically, you know, you could say that, um, this may cost money in terms of we have to hire more substitutes, but the savings is teachers can now bank less sick days per year, so when they get to retirement, they're banking less sick days that we have to pay out. So I'd be curious as to.
It'd be difficult, but we can play with that, Mr. Jones, as you're, I know you're aware of this, but the sub rate is four times the amount of the payoff on the back end, but it would offset it, and that's a great point, it won't pay for it, because I think under my breath here, I said, oh, it may be a wash, but it's going to be far from a wash, but it will offset it, it's a good, it's a good catch.
All right, fair enough, so, okay, I've said my piece, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Kyle?
So I don't know if we want to have a conversation on this this month or next month, so maybe I'll just say what I say, and we can revisit next month. I just, first off, I have an issue with 3% base to salary schedules for teachers versus 5% base for administration. When those are out of line, that just doesn't sit well with me personally. I'm one of seven, but it does not sit well with me. If we're looking to catch up parts of the schedule on the middle or the end, um, I think that would be in addition to, for example, 5% or something. Um, so I'd be curious in the cost difference between what's being proposed here and that base aligning to what we have for support and administration. Um, and then I would also, not question, but maybe want to know more of the why behind adding 1% for years 21-plus after we gave them a bump last year, instead of potentially applying that to 2% in the mid, because my, my belief, or maybe something I need to be educated on, is I really think it's the mid-career folks that we struggle to retain the most, or then leaving the district can cause the biggest impact on, on, on teaching and replacing them. So I would be curious in at least looking at the number differences for next month and getting some more information on that. and getting some more information on that. And the last thing, you know, my feelings on our salary schedule and maybe more long-term, what would it take for us to get away from inland steps and be more aligned to what's to the east of us on step consolidation?
I think I can touch on each one of those and certainly.
I know why we have so many steps.
And in between, there may be a memo that tries to drill down on this, but so you help me with this a little bit, but I'll just start by saying, all that information that you're looking at was shared with the salary committee and they were okay with it. And so, just as per, and it was specifically asked, what the administration support staff were going to get. The second thing is, the typical path is you're kind of growing into a competitive salary schedule is, we've talked about this, is if you can't, if you can't compare, if you can't compete with, in our case, the districts to our east, they have a much bigger tax base, where do you apply your resources? At the front, at the front, at the front. And so a whole strategy, and it's nobody's, a unique strategy, it's get them there and then settle on your, on your culture, you know? And then the second phase of that is try to get it on the back end. So there is going to be a little bit of this donut effect, you know, that it hollows out a little bit, but you're trying to get them, hey, if, you know, I can ride this out, I can be competitive. So it's kind of the conventional strategy, doesn't mean that we can't do something to mix it up a little bit, but I'll just say that's, that's kind of the, and I have no idea, I have no doubt, previous administrations of boards, that was the strategy at the front loading, and I've kind of followed suit with that, that conventional thinking. Your, maybe third and fourth question.
So I think to summarize it, I would, next three days, if it's a memo, that's perfect. I just would be very curious.
Oh, the cost, the cost, absolutely.
To a couple of different scenarios. And then really, secondly, more long-term, how can we make our schedule more palatable more forward?
That, and keep in mind, and that's perfect, Mr. Lewis will definitely bring you those numbers. But the, and then you're the second board member, one prior to the board meeting that's asked about that, that schedule going down to 40. It is a little unique.
I know the history.
And there is a history to it, and I hope, you know, but the thing is, I didn't put it on the table to try to pull, I don't know that we can get a lot of resistance from the salary committee, but understanding that it is a takeaway. You know, it's not advantageous for them. So typically, when you're bringing something like this, hey, we're going to cut off the last 10 years of the schedule, we're going to have to give something up, you know? And so it just hadn't been on the table because we haven't, you know, that hadn't been a priority. And so did it, I guess I've become accustomed to it a little bit, you know, that we are maybe one of a handful of districts that actually goes out to 40. It does make us look a little better on MSTAs comps too, but it's, we don't hide from that with the committee, believe me, I told them, I say, that's because we have 40 steps and nobody here outside of a couple of people would work to 40 years. Good, good feedback on that, though?
So if I'm doing math correctly, and I just got rid of it, but our, how everybody thinks I just got rid of it, plus three percent is, so our starting salary next year for a BS degree will be 45.7?
That's sound right. She's pulling it up.
Sounds about right.
And we'll circle back to that if that's right.
So that's, I mean, that's, that's $1,500 higher than Wentzville.
Yeah, our front looks good.
And so does the step five masters will be higher than Wentzville.
The, another thing, like I said, and these are great questions, and it's really good the board's in tune with this, because I know if you're going to spend 80% of your operational budget, you know, it's going to cost some discussion. One concern on, and I communicate this to the committee too, is what we've got working against us a little bit is the districts that did not push to the minimum state, the new minimum salary schedule, they're getting subsidized by the state. So it's still important to bump that front end because now the emo is actually on the front, eroding our, our strategy because they're getting closer to us on the front and they're not paying for it. Now, the spook is, and I didn't, I didn't mention that back in Centerville 727, but that is one of those things in Centerville 727 that is not guaranteed. I mean, it's not guaranteed. Oh, in fact, the, there was, there's a clip going around with the legislature, and I can't remember the particular person, but said, we have no intention of sustaining that. We can't. At some point, we've got to cut that off. So back to the point is, though, the reason why we still didn't, you know, go one percent and two to two or something, was it's still important that we have some positive front of our schedule. That was the rationale, that, you know, the committee seemed to understand that, and I provide that to you as well. That's great stuff, though. You guys are in tune. Next slide. We're close. So when you wrap this up, just at least at the point we were when Veronica said, hey, you got to stop, let's put this together, was we're looking right now in the positive of about $34,000. But of course, there are things that we could be more aggressive with. I tend to be very conservative, meet that need of what we, what we negotiated in those salary committee meetings, but right now, we're looking positive to the tune of about $34,000. I think anybody that's been on the board with me for four years knows that, are we going to be better than that if everything comes out? Yeah, I think we are. I think we do have a little thunder in the horizon, just to be a little bit more cautious than maybe we have been the last few years. Next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, let me, let me just, I don't know that you need me to read that, but that's, that's basically pulling all the points that I made earlier, other than this.
And this is, this is FY '24?
This is '25. And I don't know if that says '24 because we didn't change that. There, sorry. I'm sorry, that's a good catch. This is absolutely FY '25. Typically, what I've done with the salary committee and the Board of Education is, look, if we take our major revenue drivers and we identify how much money we're going to have, that's new revenue, we can apply that to the salary schedule. However, there's a little exception in this year, and you'll note down there at the bottom, we have new facilities that we have to accommodate for with utilities. We've got that at $120,000. We feel like that's going to catch it, but we don't have any history to look back on. But we also had significant transportation increases in the new contract. So we did a really good job of getting a very attractive contract that we benefited from and heard from our contractor many times, how it was underpriced, and they're making up a little ground notice, probably a little bit now to get caught up. And they also know that the formula is funded now, transportation formula, at 75% of all expenses. So we've added routes, and there was a little, I'd say, premium to the contract too. That was pretty, I don't know, 34 months. So obviously, that's not your entire budget, that is the major revenue drivers and the major expenditures that we have identified that really drive the changes in the budget. And we will definitely change up FY '25, sorry, but we can catch that. Thank you. Alright, next slide. Now, capital expenditure, when we're talking about just that $1 million that Dr. Way spends year in, year out, this is some of the highlights of that, of that capital expenditure. So those are the things he has slated to take on next year. Next slide, please. And then I want you to take this a little time, and we'll take a little time with this slide because it has an ask as the upcoming slide here. This is what we've done with, on the left-hand column, this is what we've done in a relatively short amount of time. We've taken, you know, come in at FY '20 at less than $700,000. We've taken advantage of every opportunity we could to meet the needs that we, that we had to, to now be in one of the top forming districts in the state, top 25%. We've been able to accomplish that and also get out ahead and put some money in Fund IV because we know the growth is coming and we can't trust that we'll have enough body cast capacity to accommodate that. So if you look at how we've grown, that is just our Fund IV revenues there. But every now and then, you got to dip out of them. And you see where it says $2 million internal restricted? That's not cabinet code language, that's broadening eyes language. That's the 2 millions that don't spend because that's obligated to Proposition 6725. Okay, so we said all along, we're going to take $2 million of our local, of our Fund IV reserves and pay into that. And again, so then if you look at that asterisk, and then Veronica put me an asterisk over in the other, that's just the Fund IV snapshot from the projection, and that's for the Fund IV, for FY '24 summary, just to tell you where we're at fiscally, specifically in Fund IV. And again, that $12 million is overstated. Why is it overstated? It's because we've got $2 million that's obligated to the props, but it also still has a little bit of general obligation volume revenue in there that will be expended out FY '25. So we feel more comfortable with you looking at the left-hand column going $9 million, but really $7 million. $9 million if you take out the general obligation revenues, and then just be mindful that you have $2 million that's allocated to the Prop 6725. Does that make sense? I can go over that again. We've built revenue, we've built great reserves of Fund IV, but don't fall in love with the 12 million. It's overstated, overstated for general obligation revenues, and certainly the plan was to move, to use $2 million for the props.
And we do not, we do not believe that there, that 1.4 is going to make it in there? Or? No, I'm looking at you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not trying to answer your question.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and then, but we do need to take another look at those Fund IV reserves too, so next slide, please. So written in this budget, that's currently written, what we called Wright City High School Transition. And we were asking for $500,000, and we are starting to detail some of the needs that we think we are going to need, you know, moving into, when we move into that building, because there are just going to be some unforeseen things. So I'm happy that we have the reserves to be able to do this, and as we talk about this internally, I'll just, you know, show my cards, we think we can easily spend $300,000. We're not sure we can get any more than that, but I think we want plenty of room to operate there because what we don't want to do is open up a building and then be hung up on a $20,000 or $30,000 expenditure that, you know, is just obvious needs. So you're going to have the weight room cost share, okay? That's going to be in there, but of course, you're going to spend 80, but you're going to get $40,000 back from the booster club. But the coffee store.
Have we worked into shares on any of those other items listed there?
We have not.
Because I think, I don't see why we couldn't get a couple.
Good.
It's peeking in my brain.
We do have a couple of things that I've reported on earlier that I'll say have maybe, you know, kind of lost momentum, but I'll relay those to Dr. Shallow, she'll pick those back up. But they are not specific to this, but I do, I know you're seeing some things there, and I think it's great.
I mean, between the coffee store, the miscellaneous furniture and ag furnishings, I don't see how we can't get part of that cost shared or even donated or something if we identify exactly what direction we're going with that.
Yeah.
I'm not going to put my name, and I won't be able to do that, but eventually I'll find you something.
That's great, that's great, you know? And you can see there, we don't have, Dr. Way is working on some numbers for each one of those, but we don't know exactly what that need is exactly. So we'll continue to develop that, but what we'd like to do is write into the budget $500,000, which does not give us a blank check, the administration. That, every expenditure has to be more improved. So you, that would come back to you, knowing that it's going to come out in that transition. This is a common practice for moving into the new building, by the way, to put money in there just for the unforeseen. So any feedback on that, any further feedback? Because we're getting real close.
Keep going.
Next slide, please. So then we pull it right back up to the FY '25 projected fund balance. I assure you, this will change. It will not hold, but this is what we're budgeting from a fiscal, a fiscally conservative lens. So if you see there, you go 24%, and that might throw up your flag because of the things I hopefully have helped guide you to look at. Well, the first thing you told me to go look at, Chris, is the reserves. Why did the reserves drop? Did we deficit spend? If you went up there to the estimated revenues, the estimated expenditures, you would see that we did not deficit spend. We just have a higher operational expenditure. So if you take that static number of $6.6 million and put it, divide it against a higher estimated expenditure, you're going to get a lower percentage. Okay? So you're still above your 22% target of board goal target. And keep in mind what I told you earlier on FY '24, that we aspire to transfer 1.4, and we have the full intention of doing that, but I'm not sure we can get there. That money doesn't go away in FY '24, which would pop your balance, which would have a domino effect to this and pop the balance. And then, of course, we have a four-year history, at least a four-year history, four-year, or I should say, three-year history that I'm certain of, a variety of budget that we are pretty optimistic will be better in the end than what F25. So all that given, that's what we're projecting now, but of course, you'll have frequent updates throughout FY '25, you're bringing that year today. If you were looking at that, the other thing I want to point out, if you look at, that's operations. Fund III, we know, we take care of itself. The one thing that we do not have in that FY '25 estimated ending balances is we don't have the LP's revenue back end. So you can trust it's going to be somewhere in that, what we agreed to, seven and a half to eight and a half fund balance for Fund IV, and that's conservative as well.
So why is that fund balance a negative number, not a positive number for Fund IV?
In Fund IV, because you'll remember, I think a couple of years ago, Dave caught, which was a really good catch, that lease purchase certificates do not reflect in the ASBR. So thus, Veronica didn't reflect them in our projected fund balance, but what we said as we were working through this, we said, for FY '27, we're going to get the lease purchase revenues accounted for, did I just say, what did I just say?
FY '27.
I didn't mean that, I meant June 27th. For the June 27th budget.
Kind of a massive difference.
Spent a lot of numbers, spent a lot of numbers. For the June 27th meeting, what we'll do is we'll change the projected fund balance to reflect the lease purchase revenues, even though they would not match our ASBR, because they don't put them in there. But for our document here, for our projected fund balance, basically, we'll be paying ourselves back for the expenditures of lease purchases.
So that's why that's a negative number?
That is true.
Estimated ending balance.
That is great. And you should not expect it to be negative when we, when we have a budget slated for approval later in the month, we'll show a positive balance there.
Well, in case someone asks me.
Yes, absolutely. That brings us to, like I say, all funds there, what we projected at, really good, strong year for FY '25, and we'll see what's ahead. We'll go to the last slide, and we'll field any questions, and we move back slides or whatever the more needs.
Does anybody have any questions? Beth, give me, oh, let me say this, any questions or anything that you want Dr. Berger to look more into, or I know Kyle's got some questions that you want Dr. Berger to look into for, for the 27th? Beth, we'll start with you. Anything that you can think of? And of course, obviously, fill this email box up with questions along the way.
I just wanted to publicly thank Dr. Berger, Veronica, and everybody else that worked on this budget presentation for all the hard work they did. You know, it's a lot of numbers in a, in a short amount of time, so just thank you for your efforts, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. We'll tune it up before next meeting too, so it'll change a little bit, not a lot.
Dave, do you have anything?
The transportation rate and added routes, will that come to the board as to re-approve a contract, or how, what's that look like?
The contract was approved, when was?
Yeah, we're anticipating additional routes in August based off of additional kids riding the buses, so.
Mr. Mo, oh, right.
Yeah, so when we were talking with them, so we had meetings in February, March to talk about summer school and stuff, but then also, what changes do we need to make? Because we have kind of two school years going on next year. We're going to have that first semester where everything's going to be kind of the same, and then we got to change stuff for second semester for the new high school. So right now, how do we get those kids in second semester? How do we get them to middle school? And then how do we get those high school kids over there while still trying to get our routes so we're meeting at west and east on time? So we're talking about some scenarios where possible, we might have 13 buses going to middle school, but then we do like a little circus, and every, all the high school kids get off and get on six buses and go to the high school.
Oh, God.
So then we can get the seven buses on the west routes, and then those six buses can get on the east routes. So we're working through that, but if we have more kids, based on the RSP, we're going to have more kids on the buses, that means more routes. That's why you put up that number for more routes.
Oh, I was just going to say, you said that, and it was, we were actually just talking about this, so I have, I went up to, anyway. Three of my girlfriends live in different communities, you know, Kansas City, Iowa, St. Joe, and their bus routes all run like that. They have shuttles.
Really?
So they meet in one area.
So they meet in one area, and then they get on different buses, and they shuttle to their other schools.
I didn't even notice, but it sounds like a circus.
Well, it might save us a few bucks, that's one of the reasons, plus it might keep us on time. That's what we're worried about, is can we get the other kids to school on time?
Mr. Mike, just to make sure, we're closing the loop on your question, though, and so, and one thing that you didn't ask, but I'm gonna reiterate is, the positive is, those are allowable expenses almost completely that we're talking about. So they will go through the formula, they will not be paid out in '25, but you'll realize those, that revenue in '26, it's paid one year arrears, and the board does approve bus routes annually. So this will come back to you, so that way Jeremy can explain to you if it's for bus route, a bus route add, but that he can provide that rationale.
But this isn't a renegotiated contract through our bus company, correct? It's just us adding to the contract that's generally-
Yeah, we're anticipating additional costs because we're gonna add some routes, yeah. That's our talk so far, is based off the numbers, we anticipated additional routes, yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
But you guys approved that contract, I wouldn't say that was January, maybe, yeah.
Mary, do you have anything?
Not at this point, that's a lot to comprehend.
Need some time to chew on it.
Yeah, need some time to chew on it, and there, you know, but I'll, I'll get in touch.
Good.
I don't have any current questions. I might touch base with you, maybe just have a little brainstorming session on just the esoteric stuff that really isn't falling into this budget, other than that $500,000, but that's some thoughts.
Kyle, anything other than?
I'm good for now, I'll reach back out if anything else comes up.
Good, thank you.
Austin, Austin, do you have anything else?
I just wanna say, Aaron, you did an awesome job.
Oh, well, I'm no, I'm no Austin Jones, but I'll try. If-
No, you did an awesome job, I really appreciate what you're doing.
Well, thanks. If, I would like, if we could get like salary schedule of what it looks like now, and then what it's gonna look like just, and maybe like beforehand in a memo or something, just so we can look to see what numbers we're looking at, and then we can kind of compare with some of our districts and see where we're at.
We'll do that easy.
Okay. All righty then, I guess that's, what do you have?
I think, yeah, you're close.
All right.
Oh, no, is our salary schedule in an Excel spreadsheet, I mean, or do you have it?
Oh, in Excel. Okay, thank you. Or Google sheet? Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to make that change, you never think of Google.
All right, then, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven of them, all right, see you guys in a couple weeks, thank you.
Hey, goodbye.